So just to start with our topic introduction, as all of you know, this is regarding the Gavin Grimm case. And on Friday, October 28th, the Supreme Court agreed to hear G.G. versus Gloucester County School Board. G.G. addresses a transgender high school student's right to use a bathroom that matches his gender identity. The school board adopted a policy in 2014 which created private restrooms segregated from the general student population and required transgendered students transgender students to use them. On April 19th of this year, the Fourth Circuit found in a two to one decision that federal law requires schools to allow transgender students the choice of which bathroom to use. The school board filed their file for stay was rejected, leading to appeal to the U.S. Supreme Court. On Wednesday, August 3rd, the Supreme Court ordered to hold on the injunction until it decided whether or not to hear the case. So that's just some very brief background on the case, and I'm looking forward to hearing much more about it. So just for some speaker introductions, Shannon Minter is the Legal Director of the National Center for Lesbian Rights, and he is a longtime LGBT advocate and has served as lead counsel for a number of high-profile cases, including the 2009 Proposition 8 case in the California Supreme Court. Minter has been the recipient of a number of awards, including the California Attorney of the Year in 2009, and was listed as one of six Lawyers of the Year by Lawyers USA. And then we also have Josh Block, who is the Senior Staff Attorney with the ACLU. And Josh Block is a Senior Staff Attorney there, and he has served as counsel in a number of key cases and is the counsel record in this matter before the Supreme Court. And then we have Adam Unicalci, who is a partner at General and Block. And Adam litigates cases before the Supreme Court, appellate courts, trial courts, and administrative agencies. At the Supreme Court, he would lead counsel in two cases in 2016 alone, and has prevailed in both. So that is just some brief introduction, and then I think to start, it might be easiest if Josh, perhaps you could give us some further background on this matter and what the current posture of the case is today.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, and thanks for having me. So the facts of this case began in 2014. In the fall, in the spring of 2014, as Gavin was ending his, Gavin Grimm is G.G., as Gavin was ending his freshman year, he, his untreated gender dysphoria had sort of become so debilitating that he could no longer actually attend class. And he reached a point where he gathered up the courage to tell his parents that he is a transgender boy and that he needs to have, you know, treatment to help him live in accordance with his gender identity. That summer, finally got the medical care that he needed, legally changed his name, started a full social role transition, began referrals for hormone therapy, and has been living as the boy that he is ever since. His parents were fully supportive and actually with Gavin had a meeting with the school administrators before the beginning of his sophomore year to explain that he is a boy and that he should be treated as such. He also had treatment documentation letters from his therapist explaining that he is a boy and that being able to live in accordance with his gender identity was critical to his health and well-being. And the school administrators were actually terrific. They respected and acknowledged Gavin as the boy that he is and allowed Gavin to use the boys restroom, and he didn't have any problem doing so whatsoever. The problems came when the school board stepped in. Apparently, some adults in the community had complained to the school board about the fact that a quote "girl" was using the boys room. And the school board, in response to those complaints, passed a policy that was directed specifically at Gavin and his individual circumstance. The policy says that "all students shall be provided restrooms and limited to restrooms based on their biological gender," is the term they used, and that "students with gender identity issues," is the term they used, "will be provided an alternative private facility." Gavin was standing up in the school board meeting, you know, by himself, explaining who he is, explaining that he is just a boy and needs to use the restroom like anyone else, but the school board voted six to one to pass the policy. That was December of his sophomore year, in December 2014. We sued at the end of sophomore year in June 2015, arguing that the policy discriminates against him on the basis of sex under Title IX and the Equal Protection Clause. We lost our motion for preliminary injunction in the district court, and the district court also dismissed the Title IX claim. And then on appeal in the Fourth Circuit, the following year, of May 2016 this year, the Fourth Circuit ruled that Gavin's rights under Title IX were violated, and importantly, that the Department of Education, which had been telling schools back since 2013 that Title IX requires that they allow trans students to use restrooms to match their gender identity, was a reasonable interpretation of Title IX and the regulations and should be deferred to by the courts. What happened over the summer after that is the Supreme Court stepped in, issued a stay of the Fourth Circuit's decision until it could consider whether to hear the case, and they granted cert back in October. As things currently stand, there are two questions before the Supreme Court. One is, does the Department of Education's interpretation of Title IX warrant deference? And the second question is, with or without deference, what does Title IX and the regulation require? Does Gavin have a right under Title IX to use the restrooms that match his gender identity? Or is a policy like the school board's biological gender policy, which categorically excludes all transgender students in any time or place or facility from ever using restrooms that match their gender identity, is that categorical policy immunized from challenge? The court is, has informed us that they are planning to have oral arguments at the end of February. The school board's brief is due in December. Our brief is due on January 11th, and amicus briefs, including the briefs from the Justice Department, are due on January 18th. And as some of you are probably, you know, calculating, that is two days before inauguration. And so the brief in the case will be filed by the Obama Justice Department, and we will have to see after the 20th what the new Justice Department does. We don't really know yet, for obvious reasons. They might, you know, there's always a possibility of them trying to withdraw the brief or disavow it, but the brief that is filed will be filed by the current administration. And I'm sure that we'll talk a little bit more about what other impact the change in administration could have, but that is the landscape as it currently stands.
Great, thank you so much for that. Now, if Shannon and/or Adam have anything to add to that as well, I would love to hear it. If not, I sort of have a follow-up question for Shannon.
Well, I would, this is Shannon, and I'm dying to hear what Adam has to say about this. And Adam, it's so great to have you on this call with us, thanks for doing it. I just want to stress to people how important this case is. I mean, ACLU has done an amazingly, just a great job, their briefs have been so good. And this case potentially has ramifications that go far beyond even the protections for transgender students. It's possible, and you know, Adam, maybe you can help us since you're such a Supreme Court expert, but it's possible the case could be decided very narrowly, just on, focused just on the issue of what level of deference should be given to certain kinds of agency guidance. And that's an important question, but it's also possible that the Supreme Court will reach the underlying substantive issue of whether Title IX protects transgender students, which would obviously, is obviously a question of huge importance, and the very same legal theory that would be at issue in that question, whether sex discrimination law protects transgender people, is also the basis of so many of our other gains in other areas, especially employment. So this, I just, I hope everyone on the phone and out there in our community is aware of how unbelievably important this case may be. I mean, this case could really be, you know, of equivalent importance to transgender people as the Obergefell case was for same-sex couples and marriage and beyond. So we need, we need all hands on deck in terms of helping create a great climate for the courts and just doing everything any of us can to build more support around transgender, the importance of this case and the importance of equality for transgender people. And I will, I'll stop there.
Thank you, sorry, thanks Shannon, thank you for the introduction as well. You know, I wish I could have a prediction about how this case will come out, but it's quite difficult to know at this point simply because of the change in administration and the change in the composition of the court makes it, I think, unusually difficult to figure out exactly how it is the court's going to deal with this case. And that actually leads me to a question which Josh alluded to, and I'm genuinely curious about. You know, as I'm sure you're very, very well aware, and you've probably talked about this a lot, there's certainly the possibility that the new administration will, maybe before oral argument, maybe after oral argument, we don't know when, is going to install some new person in the Department of Education who is going to withdraw the prior letter issued by the Department of Education, issue a new interpretation of the relevant Title IX regulation that's going to say, well, you know, we think that this administration interprets the regulation to mean that, you know, G.G. is a girl and therefore that the policy of the school board complies with Title IX. And so that, and suddenly that'll sort of make the hour arguments that you advanced a little bit awkward, because at least there's an argument that if the current administration's position deserves deference under our, the next administration's position also deserves deference under our, under the logic of the Brand X case from several years ago. So, you know, I'm sure you're aware of the sensitivity of the issue, and so I'm just wondering how you're planning to deal with the hour question in light of the possibility that suddenly the administration's position might change.
Yeah, sure. So I think that, you know, it is, we won't know what they do until they do it, but I think everyone is preparing for, you know, the possibility that they, the new administration might, you know, revoke the guidance. I think that on, and if they do so, then the question, you know, I mentioned there are two questions before the court. One is on deference, the other is on the merits. And that deference question would go away. I don't think that, at least in the near future, there's a danger of our deference working against Gavin, at least for the time being, because there are a lot of cases saying that when an agency whipsaws between one position and another, they don't get deference to the new changed position. I think that there's no deference to the original position, but there's not, you know, negative deference on the other way either. Of course, the more time the administration has to build up, you know, some thought-out, you know, policy based on future study, based on rulemaking or something like that, then as more time passes, I think there's a bigger risk of unhelpful deference. But I think for the time being, it would just eliminate the our question. I think that that's also, you know, another reason why this is, you know, a critically important time. We are, you know, going to be looking ahead to, you know, a new administration that might want to apply statutory protections against sex discrimination in a very different way than they've been applied for, you know, at least two decades. And to whatever extent the Supreme Court, you know, is able to reaffirm that sex discrimination indeed does include discrimination against trans people, that may well be important, an important bulwark to stop the existing protections from being eroded over the next four to eight years.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I appreciate the, you know, the argument you made about, you know, with an administration sort of shift between positions. I mean, obviously, the best-case scenario in this case would be a holding that with or without deference, you know, Gavin wins under, or G.G. wins under Title IX. But, you know, that's actually a question that the Fourth Circuit didn't decide, in other words, didn't decide without deference who wins the case. And so I'm wondering if, you know, you were considering taking the position, if asking the Supreme Court either to send it back, or do you want the Supreme Court to, you know, resolve the issue even with currently the uncertainty about what the administration is going to say, what level of deference it'll be now, what level deference it'll be two years from now if there's a rulemaking and so forth?
Yeah, well, so I'm not, I'm not sure if the Supreme Court will, will care about which of the options we prefer, or that we'll have an opportunity to tell the court what our preference is. I think that, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what the answer would be even if we were asked at this point. I think that, I think what is clear and what we want everyone to understand is that, you know, that there are two questions in front of the court, that even if the deference issue goes away, the underlying merits is before the court. They obviously have an option of vacating and remanding to the Fourth Circuit, but they also, it's completely possible that they will rule on the merits and decide that, you know, having granted the issue, cert on the issue, to, you know, sort of end confusion and uncertainty, that it's best for them to decide it. And we don't, we're not sure yet, you know, if asked what we would say, but I do want to make sure that everyone understands that the notion that, oh, this was all just about guidance, and once the guidance goes away, the case goes away, is certainly not true. It's not true for Gavin, and it's not true for trans kids across the country, where there, you know, there are currently cases pending in the Seventh Circuit and in the Sixth Circuit on the, on the same issue, in that whether it's decided now or decided later, this is about Title IX. And the fact that the Department of Education agreed with us about what Title IX and the regulations mean was helpful, but it was by no means, you know, necessary in order for us to prevail.
Sorry, just one other question before, very short question before we go to Shannon and the audience. I think that you, based on the timeline, G.G. is a senior now, and if that's true, will the case become moot at the end of the school year?
So it won't for two reasons. One is that, you know, there's claims for injunctive relief and there's claims for damages. And the underlying Fourth Circuit decision was not just on a P.I., it was on a motion to dismiss. So him, if the injunctive relief claims did become moot, that wouldn't make the appeal moot. But he also will be subject to this policy at any graduation events, at football games in the community, and so I don't think that even his graduation would moot this case. In fact, you know, he was just telling us a few weeks ago that he was at, you know, the college, I have college, the high school football game with his friends, enjoying it, and he had to use the restroom. And there are no single-sex restrooms at the football stadium or porta-potties. It's all boys' restrooms and girls' restrooms. He tried to go and use the restroom in the school building, it was locked, and he ended up having to call his mom to take him home. And so I think that, you know, it, you know, I'm so used to talking about how it interferes with his education, how it stigmatizes him, how it isolates him from the rest of his peers, but I think it sort of drove home for me that, you know, he can't even go to a football game, he can't be a normal kid without having to plan out how he's going to pee. And, and I think that it sort of shows that these restrictions go way beyond, you know, the specific context of, you know, how is he going to pee during the school day from, you know, nine to two, or whatever the school hours are, that these restrictions really interfere with, you know, someone's participation, you know, in the life of a campus community, or when these restrictions are imposed, you know, outside of the context of schools, it really, you know, disables people from being able to be, you know, full participants in society at large.
Thank you. Shannon, I know that you wanted to say something a moment ago, and I'm really curious to hear if, what you have to add to that.
Oh, well, thank you so much, Paul. Just, just one more thing to follow up on Adam's very good question about whether the Supreme Court will necessarily address the merits of the Title IX question, or whether they might, if they decide there's no deference applies here, that send it back to the Fourth Circuit to consider that question for the first time. I just wanted to say that I very much hope that the Supreme Court addresses the merits now, because we really, and I hope the court recognizes this, you know, we, the country needs guidance on this question, they need to resolve. It's incredibly important question we're talking about, as Josh was just so eloquently describing, you know, the lives and well-being of students and the kinds of harms that are being inflicted are, can never be undone. I mean, he'll, Gavin and all the other students affected by the court staying the Fourth Circuit decision and by some schools, you know, many schools are still doing the right thing, but many are not, you know, that's, that's harms that these young people will, will, will never, you know, there's no way to compensate them for that. So I am very much hoping, praying that the Supreme Court will not delay this any further and that they will, they will put this matter to rest, you know, once and for all.
Yes, thank you for that, Shannon. And I know that it's already 12:54, and we have been getting some questions, so I just want to make sure that I can ask them to you all while we have you on the line. I will also just remind anyone else who's calling in right now that if you want me to ask any questions to our speakers, please send them over to me now so I can make sure that they're asked. The first question that I have here, which I guess is best honestly for all of you, is what is the single largest obstacle faced in the success of this case? Perhaps you could start with Adam?
Well, sure, yeah. The single biggest obstacle, well, I mean, there's a couple of things. I mean, I think that we're all concerned about the Supreme Court's stay order. We know that Justice Breyer joined it without really believing it, but we also know that Justice Kennedy apparently did believe it, and the legal standard for stay orders is, you know, there has to be a reasonable prospective reverse, a view that there's a reasonable prospective reversal, which Justice Kennedy evidently thought. And given that there's going to be another, you know, conservative justice on the Supreme Court, obviously that's something that everyone on this call is worried about. However, I mean, obviously, the ACLU team are fantastic litigators, if anyone can win the case, they can. Sort of more narrowly, you know, it's going to be a complicated issue with this our deference issue. That's a question that actually many justices are quite interested in, and, you know, the question of whether to defer under our to the letter becomes even more complicated if the letter is rescinded or replaced, you know, during oral, you know, before oral argument, during briefing, after oral argument, suddenly it sort of makes the question rather topsy-turvy. And in that context, you know, I mean, the Supreme Court could, as Shannon suggested, just say, well, we're just going to address the merits and ignore the deference issue. The Supreme Court is sort of very interested in procedures, and I do think that they'll want to say something about the deference issue in the very sensitive, especially in the very sensitive climate of a change in administration. And because of that, I, you know, I, I'm not sure what they'll do, but I think that they'll be reluctant to resolve the issue in this very sensitive time as opposed to, you know, sort of some kind of procedural ruling that will punt the issue down the road. But, you know, I've been wrong before, I mean, the Supreme Court has done a lot of bold things for LGBT rights over the last several years, and so I certainly hope that they'll do it again.
And Shannon and Josh, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, yeah. So I think that, I think that that's exactly right, and I think that, you know, at least, you know, not that I have any special insight, but my sense is that one of the things that motivated the justices that granted the stay was the perception that this was sort of administrative overreach by the Obama administration, and that before a policy like this, you know, is, changes the facts on the ground, that the Supreme Court wants to have a say. And I think that ironically, or counterintuitively, if the deference issue goes away, I think that might lift a cloud or, you know, a screen in how Justice Kennedy is viewing the case, that I think that this is a case, as it was teed up for cert, both about federalism and a case about individual rights. And I think that if the deference issue is gone, and if this is a straight-up claim about Title IX, I think that that might actually be an environment where Justice Kennedy is likely to appreciate the harms at stake, both the physical harms and the dignitary harms that happen whenever sex classification is used, but especially when it's used to single someone out for different and unequal treatment in this way. So I think that, I think that it's true that the deference issue was a lightning rod at the beginning. I don't know whether the court is going to think that, you know, delaying the ultimate issue for a few more years is the, is the best answer. Another possibility, of course, is the answer to, you know, does the, do policies like this violate Title IX doesn't necessarily have to be always yes or always no, it could be sometimes depending on the facts, in that it was error to dismiss the claim on the pleadings. So I think the variety of ways that the court can rule on the issue, whether broadly or narrowly, without simply kicking it back to the Fourth Circuit without saying anything.
That was so great, Josh, a great explanation. And so I just want to really quickly just chime in, say, I love everything you just said, and I think, to me, the biggest obstacle and the big, big, big picture is just that the court is so much less familiar with transgender people than they are with LGB people. And to put in another plug to everyone listening on the phone, that's something that every single person on this call can help with. You're a part of the legal profession, and we need to make sure that the court has, knows as clearly as possible that, you know, the profession is 100% behind transgender people, and as much public education as any of us can do, writing pieces in legal journals, op-eds, that kind of thing, would be just so helpful right now. That's my number one worry, is just, you know, there's not been a lot of cases percolating through the federal courts. I mean, there's been some, but not a ton, nothing like the level that we had with marriage equality, for example. And the court hasn't considered a case involving a transgender person in a very, very long time, not for decades. So I hope that they, that's where the burden is on all of us, I think, to try to expedite that educational process in what is now a very, very narrow window of time.
Thank you so much for adding that, Shannon. And I know we're at 1 o'clock, but I just want to get to one other question that someone has asked before I just get some closing thoughts from you all. And that question is, although it is impossible to predict what you, what will happen, there's just a lot of uncertainty with President-elect Trump and his electing a ninth justice. And so I think what this person is asking is really if you all think that we will, when this case is heard, if there will be nine justices hearing it, or eight. So I don't know who to start with on this, but perhaps we could start with Adam?
Yeah, I think the answer is eight, because February doesn't strike me as quickly enough to get someone new on the bench. I mean, maybe not, but even if President Trump, it's going to take a while to get used to saying that, nominates on, you know, its first week, there's going to be hearings, there's a vote, there's going to be maybe a filibuster, there's going to be a lot of hand-wringing. I think that the nominee will eventually be confirmed at some point, but it's going to take a little time. You know, if the case is four-four, the court could consider, you know, holding it over for re-argument, something like that, and so it's possible the case will ultimately be heard with nine, although I think that just internally at the court, you know, the court would be quite reluctant to do that, which would turn the confirmation, you know, into kind of a, you know, it would make this case front and center in the confirmation battle, which I think the court would be reluctant to do. You know, I, as, you know, but as Josh said, I mean, I do think that, you're right, Josh, that Justice Kennedy may have been motivated by the idea that, you know, however this issue is decided, it shouldn't be by someone in the DOE, it should be by the federal courts. And, you know, I mean, Justice Kennedy has been, you know, it's true that transgender cases, cases involving transgender litigants have been, are far fewer than cases involving, you know, gay and lesbian litigants, but, you know, I think that Justice Kennedy has been on the forefront of these issues for many years, and, you know, I, I do have some hope he will, he will sort of see the proverbial light. And so, you know, my, certainly my, my hope is that we have a five-three decision, don't even need a ninth justice. And I think that, I mean, that's the best-case scenario.
Thank you, Adam. And how about you, Shannon?
I don't have anything more to add on that one.
Okay. The only thing, the only thing I would add is, you know, one of, one of the people apparently on Trump's shortlist is Judge Pryor from the 11th Circuit, who is an extremely conservative judge, but joined the decision from the 11th Circuit in Glenn versus Brumby saying that there's inherently an overlap between discriminating against someone because they're transgender and discriminating against someone on the basis of sex for gender nonconformity. So I, I'm certainly not counting on there being a six-three decision with nine justices, but... So, I, I'm certainly not counting on there being a 6-3 decision with nine justices, but I, I don't want to squelch all possible hope.
Thank you for adding that, Josh. And I think now, just right before we wrap up, I just want to leave an opportunity for you to give some final thoughts. So, Josh, I know you were the last one to speak, so if you have anything else to add, what would that be?
I would just echo what Shannon said, that this is, you know, this is a time where I think we need a whole lot of education, a whole lot of visibility in a narrow period of time. And I think we need to make sure that all the stories and conversations that happened about marriage over the course of, you know, 10 years happen now in the course of a couple months, or happen more quickly. So, I think that, to, I think that's something that, you know, everyone can contribute to.
Shannon, I'll just jump in. Well, I was just going to, the only thing I wanted to add is to say thank you again so much to you, Josh, and to the ACLU for doing such a magnificent job on this case and carrying a really heavy burden right now that I know is really stressful, and we all appreciate you and the ACLU and your work on this case very much. So, thanks for that.
Thanks, Shannon.
Yes, very much so. Adam, do you have, do you have anything else for a last word for the call?
Yeah, just, I think that this is an extraordinary case on two dimensions. One is really the first major transgender rights case that the Supreme Court is going to hear. And then, number two, it's also a major, major case from a broader administrative law perspective, because the Trump administration is going to go back on so much what the Obama administration has done, that how the courts will view that is a very, very important issue that affects all aspects of the administrative state, and this case presents that issue as well in some ways, depending on what the Trump administration does. So, it's an extraordinarily important case along both dimensions, and so, you know, I think that this is a truly historic case, and so I certainly wish you the best of luck, Josh.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I echo that too, Josh. I just want to, right now, just thank Adam, Josh, and Shannon so, so much for taking the time out of your very busy schedules to do this call-in with the LGBT Bar and our members and other people on the line. I just want to end by saying that the National LGBT Bar Association really can't continue to put together this informative and quality programming like this without all of your continued support. I would just say, if you'd like to see more cutting-edge legal analysis, please consider becoming a member or renewing your existing membership with our association. To learn more, please visit our website at thelgbtbar.org. And again, I thank all of you so much for listening in and for participating in this call today. Thank you.